Last but not least, we expect of you respect. And I please offer the board directors and staff to give you the same respect. Mutual respect, we can accomplish great things. Disrespect, nothing. Having shared that, if you'll all stand and have the pledge of allegiance, I'll leave off you the flag in the right input.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and you may be seated. Review of the agenda?
Thank you, Director Johnson. The agenda is as stated, no changes in the agenda. In terms of communications, I did want to thank the Fremont staff, thank Principal Ben Tia and his staff for welcoming the board and families tonight. Really appreciate the opportunity always to be in schools and I do hope that attendees and the board had a chance to see the vestibule on the way in. And there's those projects are moving, and so it's good to see, but thank you for setting this up tonight. Always good to be here, and that's all the communication I have.
Thank you very much. We have tonight two staff, two student bodies.
Alright, so we're gonna start off with sports. The spring season is currently winding up with lots of events. So Monday golf had their regionals and has officially ended their season. Tomorrow, we have our boys lacrosse team having their senior night, and that'll be their last game until playoffs. The softball team will have their last home doubleheader on Friday, and the baseball will have their last home doubleheader on Saturday. The tennis team has districts this Thursday and Saturday. Thursday will be away and Saturday will be home. And finally, the JV track team has districts at home this Friday, and varsity team has districts in Grants Pass tomorrow and Saturday. For school, FFA's vet science team won first place at state and has qualified for nationals. Our box is going to be hosting an expo this Saturday in the main gym at RHS. All of the AP tests started last week and have continued over to this week. And as the end of the year rolls around, the band and choir having their final concerts. So the percussion ensemble and the jazz band have a concert next week on Tuesday. And the concert band has one on the 25th of this month, and the choir also has a concert on the 23rd of this month.
So leadership has been having a lot of events going on. Prom was on the 29th of April, and it was a very big success. We also had our first ever family brunch, and that was this past Sunday, and it went very smoothly. And just today, we had our elections for our class representatives and our ASB president and vice president. So we are thrilled to announce that Emma Rethwell is our sophomore class rep, Ryan Eggleston is our junior class rep, Sylvia Ekman is our 2023-24 ASB vice president, and Hannah Heiburger is our 2023-24 ASB president. We will have an in-class vote for freshman reps at the start of the next school year, and we will have, we will be giving the presidential candidates who did, who lost the election today, the chance to run for senior class rep. And coming up, we have homegoing week with the volleyball games and homegoing assembly, and during this assembly, we are going to have our annual lip sync battle. And for the last event of the year, we have our senior sunset, which will be taking place May 31st at 7:00 PM.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is an honor to present the first student award tonight to Eastwood Elementary student Clayton Haddon, a fifth grader. Clayton, would you come up and all your family? For those of you that are not aware, we have given each, or will give each student a diploma type thing where they can hold their name on it, and also a McDonald's gift card, a compliment of a McDonald's corporation here in Roseburg. Be sure and thank them for their sponsorship. Let me share with you what they said about you, Clayton. It is our pleasure to celebrate and honor Clayton Haddon. Clayton has attended Eastwood since kindergarten. His legacy of perseverance, kindness, and overall gentleness fills our hearts with hope for a better world. Clayton Haddon is a respectful, kind-hearted, and hard-working student who is always willing to share a sweet smile with others. He is a wonderful member of our Eastwood family, and we are both excited for him to move to middle school and sad that we won't be able to see him every day next year. Anyone who has encountered Clayton can attest to the inspiration he spreads wherever he goes. This year, Clayton has tackled challenges with determination, a smile on his face, and a work ethic that many can admire. Clayton is also the kindest student who will accept others for who they are without judgment. He always lends a helping hand and offers support. Clayton always approaches difficult tasks with optimism and willingness to work hard to do his best. We are very grateful to see the time we got to spend with Clayton and are excited to see what adventures life may bring his way. Congratulations, young man. Clayton, congratulations. Pitch your time. Thank you very much. Our next honoree is a student from Roseburg High School, 11th grader Addison Sullivan. Addison, let me share with you. Addison attended Hugh Crest Elementary School and Joe Lane Middle School before coming to Roseburg High School. She enjoys spending her time with her dog, her little sister, and her friends in her spare time. And her favorite classes are science and math. Teachers say Addison comes to class with a positive attitude and is always there to learn and work hard. She participates often, answers questions in class, and is the epitome of positivity, positiveness. She treats everyone with respect, consideration, and kindness. In her art class, she elevates the level of discourse and is always thoughtful in how she approaches her work and respectful in discussing her classmates' art. She uses her creativity to solve artistic problems and pushes herself to improve. She is a gem. Congratulations, Addison. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Our last honoree for tonight is a student at Fremont Middle School, an eighth grader Ethan Williams. Congratulations. Let me share. Ethan Williams is a very bright student who works hard at everything he does. His grit and determination has paid off in multiple ways and will continue to help him achieve great things in his future endeavors. Not only is Ethan a hard worker, he is kind to everyone around him. Ethan gets along well with all of his classmates and always takes the extra step in helping those around him in class. Ethan is also a talented musician in both band and jazz band, and he is very involved in cribbage. He pushes himself to do his best in everything, whether it is in his academic or extracurricular pursuits. He is a person of great integrity and a wonderful role model for his period. Fremont Middle School is a better place because of your presence. Congratulations, Ethan. Congratulations to all. We will now do staff.
It's my honor this week to recognize two staff members. I will just say that this week is National Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, and so as I honor these two particular staff members, I would just like to thank everyone who works with our kids. We're so grateful for you. So first off, Jamie Banta from Fremont Middle School. The whole Fremont team should come. Anyone from Fremont should join up here. Come on, Fremont people. Let's give her a crowd, her fan club. Perfect. Jamie is known for being enthusiastic, bubbly, and encouraging. Fellow staff report that she is an amazing team member and teacher. Her Secondary Resource Center colleague Megan Couch says Jamie is the foundation on which the SRC program was built and is a rock for the students and staff. The Fremont SRC program would not be what it is today without her co-piloting the whole way. Jamie's commitment and passion for serving some of Fremont's most fragile students is so impressive. Her joy is contagious and seen on a daily basis. She loves her students deeply and is always thinking of new and different ways to help them. Fellow staff members are also grateful for the way Jamie took them under her wing and helped them be successful at Fremont. Congratulations, Jamie. Your crystal apple says, "You can do hard things." This must be her catchphrase. I have a feeling a lot of kids hear that. There you go. Fremont people who want to stay, Jake Hughes, just stay up here. And yeah, all his fan club, let's fill them up. Jake's colleagues describe him as approachable, encouraging, caring, and funny. He's 100% committed to whatever he's doing. Jake's quick, consistent, and efficient behavioral support has helped classrooms run more smoothly, and he has a thoughtful and reflective approach to management and student discipline. In his office, discipline means teaching. Jake is one of the first people at the school each day and one of the last to leave. His dedication to Fremont students and staff is evident. He builds great relationships with the students and always has their best interest in mind. He pushes employees to be their best and does the same with students. Plus, the singing makes them all smile. Congratulations, Jake. And that's that. And Jake's apple says, "General up." I feel like maybe we should have had a song, like, maybe next time, okay. Little musical interlude.
I'm gonna give a warm congratulations to all the deserving students and staff that received a reward tonight. We're gonna take a brief recess and allow those of you that came for that occasion to go home. This is also your final opportunity, if you desire to be a speaker, to fill out a card, because during the intermission, we will gather the cards. Thank you so much for coming. Stay dry out there, it's raining pretty hard. Intermission time.
No question.
Yeah, good job. Great turnout. I love that part. You missed the best, you know. I, I, we've got such great kids, great staff, awesome. I love it. And I love the cadence of the meeting, and I just started that.
Well, Jake Hughes White is the General Head Journalist. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now going to enter into public participation. We offer you this opportunity to address the board, and we ask that you can do these things with respect, one for another. I'm gonna ask Assistant Truman Zee to have a timer viewable on the screen, so that you know when you're worried, when your two minutes are up, we professionally and politely ask you to cease conversation in two minutes.
Alright, first up is Rhonda Carter. Oh, yes, and Lisa Harris will be on. Will you make sure we left the green button on?
It's on. I'm scared to death. It's my first board meeting. Hi, my name is Rhonda Carter. Good evening, board members and other members. I am the IA3 in the DLC room at Fir Grove Elementary. I'm here to make a persuasive case for, I just lost my place, persuasive case for our hardworking and dedicated staff members. As we know, IAs play a critical role in the educational system. I believe fair compensation will attract and retain quality, talented people, which is key to building a solid team. Increasing compensation for IAs is a factor that helps build that team who is positive, dedicated, and highly skilled, and also committed to our students. Wages need to be matched for instructional assistance, extensive, for instructional assistance, extensive responsibility beyond the classroom. Example, playground activities, bathroom needs for students with special needs, and the list is so extensive that my examples are minimal. These responsibilities require time, effort, and skill. By giving competitive wage increase, it would provide a positive outcome by alleviating financial stressors on the assistants. It is called a living wage. So assistants can focus on a pos, on, on providing the best possible support for their students. The increase would also help staff feel valued and supported in their works and their beliefs. I believe the increase would also help with retention of those quality people that we are looking for. I urge you to consider my argument and take action. Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to come today to just talk about the wonderful teacher, Ms. Kenyon, and just hopefully remind you all of how great of a woman she is and how great of a teacher she is. I had the pleasure of working with her for several years over at Fullerton. My kids have grown up with Ms. Kenyon, or as my son calls her, the cheese lady, because she always has a tasty little cheese snack for him. He's known her since he was three years old, and next year, he is a fifth grader, and he has waited his whole school life to be in Ms. Kenyon's class, and I have not had the heart yet to tell him of what's going on yet, because it is seriously gonna break him. Last, this last year in September, our house burnt down, and one of the first people who called us was Ms. Kenyon just to make sure that we were okay and we had what we needed and that my kids were okay. And I sent my kids to school the next day because I didn't know what else to do, and they were met by the staff at Fullerton, but Ms. Kenyon being one of them, and she had gifts for them, she had clothes for them, she had toys, stuffed animals, blankets, things to replace everything that my kids had lost. She is more than just a teacher. She cares so much about these kids. She is the person that my son goes to if he has a problem at school and he gets overwhelmed. He knows he can go to Ms. Kenyon, and she's always there. She will drop what she's doing if she sees him coming. She will call me if she sees that he's having a bad day and be like, hey, he was off today. Maybe, you know, is something going on? She's, she's just, I just want you all to know that she's more than just an educator, and just please keep in mind that the impact, the loss of her would be to our kids, cuz like, my son, I can't tell him. I can't even tell him because... Thank you.
Am I right? Oh, after me. Okay, I'm up to bat. Tough. My name's Scott Lovemark. Wanted to take a moment. I saw the building sites was on there earlier, so I thought you were gonna discuss that first. And so I didn't know if I should put my name in the hat or not put the name in the hat, so I went ahead and put my name in the hat anyways. But just wanted to thank you for, last time we were here, and I know we had lots of different issues going on of the board member that everyone had to deal with, and just want you to know that we have been, still been moving forward. We now have a estimate for our sign. This is to put add Thurman Bell Stadium to Finley Field, and I have copies for you if you'd like to do that, but I'm probably just gonna stick around, listen to the Buildings and Sites Committee report later. Okay, so thank you. Alright. Okay, so thank you. All right.
After Tracy Ayers is Sharon Nathan.
All right. Hello, my name is Tracy Ayers and I've been working at Melrose School for two years now. I came to work at the school district two years ago after realizing that although I loved my career doing hair. I was not physically able to continue it until retirement. I consider myself lucky to be here. I truly enjoy working with the students. I feel supported by my coworkers and by my supervisors. I get to be at school with my own children and see them during the day. Not to mention my back doesn't hurt constantly anymore. That being said, the position has come with some stressors that make me question how beneficial it is to continue working for this district. Roseburg is the fifth lowest paying district in the state of Oregon. To be clear, there are nearly 200 districts in Oregon and only four of those are paying the same or less. I'm at the school five days a week, six hours a day, but in order to continue paying my bills. I also still work at the salon on my weekends and even some days after school. Despite working six or more days a week, my family of four still qualifies for snack food benefits. I wish that I could say that I'm the only one in the district experiencing this problem. Many of the classified staff in our schools have second jobs and yet still struggle to cover necessary expenses. The cost of living in Roseburg is higher than the state average and we're being paid nearly the lowest in the state. Which makes the financial insecurity that much more difficult on all of us. We are unable to live on our salaries, which presents us with a Sophie's Choice. Do we give up on our children, move into a job that is less gratifying, but will provide enough income to live on? Or do we stretch our tiny resources as far as they will go, live paycheck to paycheck, unable to even afford basic necessities? In order to keep doing what we love? I have more, but I'll leave it off at that. Thank you.
After Sharon will be Jessica.
Okay, my, I have two statements. One was written by a teacher in the district, Megan Driver. She was not able to be here tonight because she's with her daughter. And Angelie Kenyon is not every teacher. This is the teacher who has her guitar in the class. And gets a bunch of fifth graders to sing silly camp songs in order to connect, in order to connect and unite them as well as provide fun. This is the teacher who helps out with our amazing talent show every year, staying hours and hours past her contract for days. Ensuring all the kids get their moment to shine and feel like a big deal. This is the teacher whose class rabbit is a part of the school family. It's, she's carried, he's carried around lovingly in a front pack and is able to roam an overly crowded classroom freely. While it's filled with students who care for it and keep it safe. This is the teacher who works hard to make education accessible, engaging, inclusive, memorable and fun. This is the teacher who sees all kids and make sure none of them falls through the cracks. This is the teacher who leads the way on classified staff appreciation weeks going above and beyond, making sure that each of us knows. We are an integral part of making our schools run and that there are no small parts and that all are celebrated. This is the teacher who threw a staff kids Christmas party in her classroom so that the staff Christmas party could focus on the staff. This is the teacher who's ready with a hug, a smile, a joke, sarcasm, a cheese based snack, love for any and all who need it. This is the teacher whose students return for years to come, visit long after their elementary days are through. This is the teacher who has a stash of ice cream sandwiches at all times to celebrate each of her kids' birthdays. This is the teacher that embodies inclusivity, believes firmly and boldly that all should have a voice and who stands no matter the adversary. Adversity, I'm sorry. This is the teacher who arrives early, stays late and always has an open door. This is the teacher I wish my own daughter had the privilege to receive an education from. And this is the teacher you cannot replace. This is the teacher you never want to lose. And that's all we have time for.
After Jesse is Shannon Mason.
I, my name is Jessie. I am a librarian at Melrose. I'm going to be reading a story because I'm a little more comfortable with that. It says, the title is, what do you do with the problem? It's written by Colby Yamda and I added a little tidbits in there as well. I don't know how it happened, but one day I had a problem. I didn't want to, but it, and I didn't ask for it. I really didn't like having a problem, but there it was, like not being able to live on my own anymore. Every place that I could afford, I didn't feel safe in just doing a walk few viewing. It's taken me 10 years working with the district to just make a little over $18 an hour. Why is it here? What does it want? What do you do with a problem, I thought? I wanted to make it go away. I shoot it. I scowled at it. I tried to ignore it, but nothing worked. I still have to budget every penny, every last penny. I started to worry about my problem. What if it swallows me up? What if my problem sneaks up and gets me? What if it takes away all of my things, hoping and praying? I don't have any extra expenses each month because I don't have any extra money. I worried a lot. I worried about what would happen. I worried about what could happen. I worried about this and I worried about that. I worried, the more I worried, the bigger my problem became and my checks stayed the same. I wished it would just disappear. I tried everything. It, I could hide from it. I even found ways to disguise myself, but it still found me. The more I avoided my problems, the more I saw it everywhere. I thought about it all the time. I didn't feel good at all. Like not being able to afford to go do things with other people because I had to save my gas money because of the prices. I couldn't take it anymore. This has to stop, I declared. Maybe I'm making my problem bigger and scarier than it actually was. After all, my problem hadn't really swallowed me up or attacked me. I realized I had to face it. And even though I didn't want to, I even thought I wasn't really afraid to tackle my problem. Please take this opportunity, then not just think about it, but actually make it happen.
Shannon Mason and on deck is Eric Fullerton via phone recording.
Hello, my name is Shannon Mason and my address is 2826 Colvin Street, Roseburg, Oregon. I would like to address the matter of Ms. Angelie Kenyon and her position at Fullerton for this year. I used to sub in Miss Kenyon's class as an IA from time to time. Her class was a little hectic at times, but she always knew exactly what to say or do to handle each individual student. She could calm her class down in seconds in a healthy and respectful way. Watching her teach was amazing. She would approach topics in such an out of the box way, in a way that made them need to know the answer. Since Miss Kenyon has left, I have subbed in her class a few times and I am now scheduled to finish the rest of the year in this position. Sorry. That being said, I have seen firsthand the effects of Angelie's absence. The effects that Angelie's absence has had on her students. The class has lost its safe person, their connection person. All around, students are more dysregulated. Behavior problems have increased with all students, including those who have never had a single issue in the past. These drastic, this drastic change in behavior leads me to believe that Angelie leaving has impacted everyone. Her students, the staff, the entire school, even our community. Miss Kenyon is one in a million and all of our students, past, present and future are so lucky to have had a teacher who loves them, respects them. And would do anything to make sure that they are on track. These kids don't deserve all the stress this has caused them. This is their last year. They deserve to leave their elementary years behind on a high note. Miss Kenyon is not just any teacher. She makes kids love school. She creates a good bond with each and every one of her students. She's the teacher that not one of her students forget.
So Eric Fullerton is sick. He wanted to read this, so I'm going to try and play it.
My name is Eric Fullerton and I am the special education teacher for the Melrose Developmental Learning Center. And I wanted to take a brief moment to say thank you all for your service and commitment to our school district. I know this is a timed mic. It's I think two minutes, so I'll try to be brief. I'd hope to be here in person to attend this board meeting today and stand with our classified staff and their efforts to be fairly compensated. For their commitment, passion and dedication that they show daily for this district. As a teacher who works intimately with a staff of six instructional assistants to support students with significant needs. I believe that it is essential that the board knows and acknowledges that the function of our schools is not just dependent upon our certified staff. But critically dependent as well upon our classified staff. I implore the board to help drive this district to invest in our classified staff and compensate them fairly for the critical work that they do every single day. All of our classified staff are integral members of our school community. They work closely with our teachers and administrators to ensure that all students have the supports that they need to thrive in the classroom and the school as a whole. Some of our classified staff help provide individualized supports to students, help manage small groups and classroom behaviors, as well as facilitate educational activities. Others help ensure that our schools run smoothly, perform important administrative tasks and maintain our schools and campuses for the entire district. Despite this critical role that our classified staff play, many are paid wages that do not reflect their contributions to our school. This is simply unacceptable. Our classified staff should be valued for their work and compensated accordingly. Many of these dedicated professionals are struggling to make ends meet. And even though they work tirelessly to support our students' education, their ends aren't meeting up. This is not just unfair to our classified staff, but also to our students, our teachers and our administrators who rely on them for support. Raising the wages of our classified staff would also help to attract and retain the best possible candidates for these critical positions. Raising wages will help address staffing shortages that our district is currently facing. Many classified staff are leaving their positions for higher paying jobs. Some of them are even leaving this profession that they love and are skilled at working in. To other industries just to ensure that their families are provided for.
That's it.
Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you very much for your participation. We are indeed honored that you took quite of your time or your busy schedule to come share with us tonight. Thank you. Moving forward, the second, first item on the agenda is the approval of the purchase of Chromebook. Assistant Superintendent Nie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Sergeant Johnson. This is the purchase of the Chromebook is an SFR grant funded purchase. This quote is current device includes the device, a power adapter and a two-year warranty, including accidental damage. The warranty covers standard issues for two years. CTO pays for shipping both ways. The first year during the second year we pay shipping for them and they pay for the return. During the two years, each device is covered for accidental, accidental damage such as dropping, screen breaking. A hundred of these Chromebooks will go to elementary schools. These are to replace broken Chromebooks that cannot be repaired. As well as Chromebooks earning increasing enrollment. We currently are one to one, so every student in our district has a Chromebook. A hundred and fifty of them will go to the middle schools and three hundred will go to large.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the Chromebooks as requested. Now to get a second. I'll move or second whatever.
You go ahead and move. And I will second.
Now we have a discussion.
I just wanted to, for the updates, something I was looking it up on earlier today. Is it a six year where we get updates on the Chrome?
On our Chromebooks?
Yeah.
And if every three to four years they're in the light. It just depends on the Chromebooks. So we have a schedule this year since we bought Chromebooks previously. We don't have any inspiring, but next year they will start to expire. And so then they cannot be updated after that point. And so each year I will present that information to the board, the number of Chromebooks that we need.
But the updates, they last for four years. Is that the duration? Before they expire?
Yeah. Then the Chromebooks are out of date and you have to.
Any other question?
I would actually be amazed if a Chromebook made it four years.
Yeah, I can attest, but yeah.
Those Chromebooks. I mean, try to encourage them to be careful.
I would also mention too, we, the COVID SFR funds have an expiration date of, I think it's September 1st of 2024. It's a grant. Those three SFR funds have come in. That's the purchase would be out of those dollars.
Are there any further discussion? They're being done. We're ready for the question. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries, so noted. The second item on the agenda is to approve a joint UCC Roseburg Public School Staff Position. Assistant Gordon.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Johnson. I got to move quick here. So in alignment with the board's strat plan. Last board meeting, I shared the desire to move forward with a jointly funded position with UCC. To help design and align some CTE programs that primarily focus on advanced manufacturing and the medical professions. Those pathways, I have received multiple messages and appreciation endorsement from local businesses who are excited about and have a desire to hire our students locally. And I'm happy to entertain any questions, but would ask for the board's approval to move forward on that position for next year. So we can get that job posted and moving forward on that position for next year.
Do I have a motion to approve the joint UCC RPS staff position? Do you have a second? And do we have any questions?
Dollar mouse.
$58,000 with benefits on our side, Cheryl or my, I think it's all right, $58,000 with benefits.
Thank you.
We ready for the question. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion has carried, so noted. Item number three, consider the criteria for extending the school year in response to school closure days. I have to have been turned it according to explain that for us, please.
Okay, I thought you were explaining this, but, but, but I certainly can, but.
You choose.
Okay. Actually, I think I, what do you say? We just make a joint decision that we have by Cheryl Larson explain this tonight. What do you think about that? There you go.
All right. So the board is aware that we have gotten lots of inquiries about what happens at the district as we have days from staff and families, what we do when we have to cancel instructional days for any reasons that are out of our control. So we have smoke, we have heat, we have snow days. And so there's always a lot of confusion. Are we making this up? When are we making this up? And so it was proposed that to provide some transparency. So families are not wondering. For considering potential makeup days, it would be beneficial to everyone to establish some clarity on how we will handle these going forward, beginning next school year. So we would like the board to consider a standard of practice that if school is canceled for fewer than four days, so if there are three days that are canceled. Those, that threshold, those days will not need to be made up. We are within instructional limits hours, so we're not, we're not threatening our instructional hour limit. But if there are three days, the first three days that we miss will not be made up. Once we hit a three day threshold. The board will then start to consider adding makeup days. And we'll start by using the ones we've already identified in the school calendar. But if not, we'll look at things like the end of the year, depending on when the closures occur. We are concerned as we move forward, sometimes in the fall when we have bad wildfires, we've had to cancel school because of air quality concerns. We may have heat closures sometimes in that fall sessions. We have heat closures. So it just helps everyone know that the first three days, they don't have to be consecutive, that school is canceled. We'll not try to make those up, but once we hit day four, we'll start doing makeup days. We'll use the ones we put in the calendar. If we run out of those, then we can start considering adding things at the end of the year. So this is just a proposal to make it so that we don't have the confusion. I know my phone rang off the hook, especially right as we can't had a snow day and it was right before one of the makeup days on the calendar. And everybody was like, are we going to be making this up? I already have weekend plans. And there just was a lot of frustration. And so we just thought it might help families know if we could just decide now as a board. So this is up for discussion now. It's just something that as we met, we wanted to bring to you.
Well, I was.
I recognize you.
I'll let Howard take it over.
So we're going to have discussion before.
Yeah. Before we make it, okay, let's just talk a little bit.
I'm not prepared to make a decision tonight. And I'll tell you why. I'd like to get some input from the professionals, that's the teachers from parents. We had a process in place and it actually works. But it, for some odd reason, it didn't work this year. I mean, the calendar committee gets together. They, you know, they decide on what makeup days are going to be. And for years it worked. They, they knew it's going to be a makeup day and, and I realized what the snow day was on a Tuesday or Wednesday. And then you had the Monday, the president's day. Well, they're scheduled for that, that reason. I'm more concerned about the second snow day, which we had. I had a teacher two or three weeks ago say, are we taking the second day up? Well, they don't know. And that was two months ago. And school's going, for heaven's sakes, it's going to be over in a month. So we're kind of to the point where my, you know, I, I want kids to be in school, but I don't think you can, it's, it's too late. I don't know why it took so long to make that decision. Still hasn't been made. So I think we're two separate issues here. So the first issue, the second day, we just, we just write it off. We just go with it. You don't have time to do it, but it's a plan did work. You know, we, we should have communicated and said, you know, these are our makeup days, but whatever I, you know, it happens on this. I want to talk to the professionals. Three days is, three days is three days. And I'm not a professional, but I would assume that three days would have, could have an effect on some kids. And, and I do look at some of our parents who if, if there's a snow day, they either have to stay home with their child or, and if they're working, they have, they have to give a day up. And they may have to pay childcare. Have you on this board, you know what childcare costs? It's ridiculous. It's just like everything else. So before we really you know, I, I just need some, I need some comments from the professionals. I need some comment. And that's what I'm going to go with. If they think it's a great idea, then I'm fine with it. But I can tell you, we're going to have some folks say three days, they're going to lose three days. It's, it could be an issue for them. So I, I just want some more time to gather some more facts. I'm not going to say I'm, I would support it. I just, I'm not there yet.
Director Lee?
Yeah, I have a bias in favor of as many school bases we can have. I think our school year is short anyway. And I, I think perhaps if we had a policy that said that we would decide about makeups at the next school board meeting after cancellation, something like that. Proposal. Yeah, I worry if we had three smoke days in, in September, that would use up our three days and then, then we're stuck if we have snow later on, unless we need other days in the meantime. So I think this is a good start.
I have a question. How far are we over the minimum threshold of hours or days that we require that state?
Yeah. So at the, at the, at the K eleven level, so the K, K eight requires nine hundred hours. K or nine, eleven, ninth grade, ninth through eleven, nine hundred ninety hours, and then twelfth grid is at nine hundred and sixty-six hours. So our current instructional hours for all students, K eleven is one thousand twenty-five. Our senior, they get out a little bit earlier is a thousand two. So we're over a hundred and twenty-five hours over state requirements for all grades. So we're over a hundred and twenty-five hours at the, at the lower grades. Thirty-six hours is the tightest one is the seniors. And so we're thirty-six hours, so approximately six days over.
You have a thought?
I generally like to, when somebody has a company new policy, I like to think about it. I don't like to vote on things first time we're seeing this. So I won't think about it. Table until next time.
Yeah, that's why we're not necessarily voting. That's why I wanted to have discussion before Howard invited us to vote was just to kind of get ideas. It was frustrating for families. There was confusion. I think in the, in the smoke scenario, that would be a scenario where we are still going to have makeup days built in the calendar. And as soon as we've used three makeup days, then we know the next time we miss a day, we're, we're starting to click into those winter makeup days into the president's day. We're starting to click into those. I would also propose, I just think as a teacher, my past experience, I would encourage us to find makeup days that are before June. I just, I, the educational value of an October day or a June day, it's not even the same thing. And so I, I just think the way our calendar is built right now, it's ridiculous to stick days at the end of the year. So I think that, that there needs to be some work also on finding makeup days in other places because kids are not going to learn much on June tenth. I can tell you that.
So are you.
So this is just, let's think about it and bring it up maybe the next meeting is what I propose to Howard.
Just concerned about.
This one.
This one.
So maybe that's a Jared and Howard question. That's above my.
If you, if you, if we are going to make an action on the current data need to be made up tonight, we need to vote on that tonight. And we want to tweak the procedure to ensure the transparency and a uniform application of that transparency. We can have a discussion at our next workstation. So what, so, so what we're hearing tonight.
I will. All third.
So let me clearly repeat what had been said. It had been moved and seconded that the current snow day that need to be made up be postponed and passed on. Is that correct? Not made up. They're going to make it up. All the in favor of not making it up say aye. Any opposed?
You're all out.
So I somehow think that, that an overwhelming unanimous. The Superintendent and I and Vice Chair, we, we discussed this. And what we really are trying to do and achieve, I can put it in, in my language. We want not only all of the directors to know, all the teachers in classified to know, all the community to know what criteria we're using to make up and not make up a snow day. So that it is not a last minute items for everybody scrambling to do it. If, if you see these series of triggered event, you know, you're going to have to make up a day. And we just have to schedule it in. That's what we're trying to do. And we appreciate your support.
And heaven forbid, I also think it's important, maybe just for the record, but heaven forbid, we have another snowmageddon. Anytime there is an actual state of emergency, it's important to note that instructional hours change. And the state changes those instructional hours and often those are not made up. So just for the record.
And then Director Johnson, but so I will, at the request of the board, we will put together some survey for parents and staff to go out and have the results for the, or if not before, if not at prior to the board meeting in June.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Don't ask the kid.
Next item on the agenda. We have the need to start the logistics with the school meeting calendar for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. They're going to draft, put in your package. As you can see, we have some months, there are two meetings on the second and fourth Wednesday, and some months, there's only one meeting for the month. And we need to do this so that we can get all the logistics in order. I need to have a motion to approve this calendar, meeting calendar.
I will move to approve the meeting calendar.
I'll second.
It has been moved to second to approve the calendar school board meeting scheduled for twenty-three, twenty-four, although the favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are prepared now to listen to subcommittee reports. It is, I desire to have the subcommittee chairperson to share their findings. And first up, it will be building insights.
Thanks. So Billy Insights Committee met last week and our main topic of discussion was what was brought up in the board meeting the week previously. The renaming of the football stadium to Thurmanville Stadium. We had a couple, two main points, topic of the conversation here. First thing that we decided or discussed was while it's a merited idea and we were, received lots of passionate discussions about why this is merited and we agree with that. Nobody ever talked about how this was going to get paid for. There was no discussion on if this is going to be a school funded project, or this is going to be privately funded by individuals who wish to use the stadium for this purpose. So we thought that we needed to discuss that with the board and that information would need to be presented to the board before anybody wanted to go any further with this discussion. And that led us to our second topic of discussion, which was that a lot of these stadiums and other parts of the state and other high schools have been using naming rights and have actually been receiving revenue for naming stadiums. So we thought that we, as a board, might want to discuss what that possibility would be at Roseburg. If that's something we wanted to pursue or research to see what is out there. We'd asked Superintendent Gordon, Gordon to to do some research for us. I'm not sure if that's on the board, on the table for tonight, to kind of do some comps and look around and see what other high school stadiums, what they've done and what they're getting. And if the board decides to, to farther go and get a RFP, which is a what's that?
Request proposal.
Requesting proposal to officially research this subject more and that's all that we had for our reports.
Any discussions, a question from the committee?
Well, I've been historically reluctant to use advertising in the schools to raise money, but I have consistently been losing that of those discussions. And financing is becoming more and more important. I do think we should weigh the financial lost opportunity if there is versus other considerations, but it makes sense to me to get some more information before we make a decision.
There will not be a vote on that, but we need to give the superintendent the approval and the authorization to investigate and bring back data at the next meeting. All those in favor of doing that say aye. Thank you. Second item on the agenda tonight is a subcommittee report from yes. Director Lee?
We're entering into bargaining and we're both licensed and qualified employees. Both of them are presently under contract to begin July of twenty twenty-one and continue through July of twenty twenty-four. In both of those contracts, we provided for twenty twenty-one rate of pay and for COLAS in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three two or two percent each year. That's, my recollection is because we thought that's about how much prices and wages and everything would be going up. I looked at the all items consumer price index for all urban consumers, partly because I had to look at that on a on a commercial lease extension when I was doing it. And that number stood at two hundred eighty-nine point eight six three for July of twenty twenty-one. And three hundred thirteen point six five one for July twenty twenty-two. And then three twenty point seven five one as of March of twenty twenty-three. And putting together my preschool mathematics skills, you take the larger number and you divide it by the smaller number. And that came out to a ten point six five percent increase so far in July twenty-one to the present time. And we haven't even entered the third year of the contract. We discussed that. Places brought up for staff, places brought up for the district, places brought up everywhere. But we recommended that we authorize the superintendent step to this area to, to do some, enter into discussions with the unions. Enter into some sharp pencil figuring our budgets, look to increase compensation for all classes of employees in reaction to the unexpected amount of inflation that we have. And to do that, knowing that it's going to be a new base for the contract that we're going to enter into in July of twenty twenty-four. But it just seemed to the committee that it was appropriate to make some adjustment. As a committee, we don't know how much of an adjustment we can make. I think that's a genuine problem we have to make based on expectations and resources. I would like to see the board as a whole endorse the idea of that we're not allowed, but without being forced. We want the district to make some adjustment compensation to reflect the change across the year since July twenty.
Chair recognizes that Director Lee had given a proposal. I'd like to have the, a motion to approve that as the direction to our superintendent. Do I have a motion to approve? Right second. All those in favor of having the superintendent open proceedings with the both unions, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. And we will give the superintendent a timeline of when he could come back to our, because we would like all of this done by July one, which is the beginning of the new contract year. So.
I'll be ready for that prior to the June meetings.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much. It is now for director report. And this month, we have asked Assistant Superintendent Lee to share her arena.
Thank you, Chair Nelson. Tonight I will be sharing updates from teaching and learning around the work that we have been doing. Records on your table, you have a copy of our instructional framework. When we start the conversation with our strategic plan, board adopted our strategic plan around the areas of appropriating family instruction, effective operation, leadership development, and safety. And all of our decisions and our work that takes place in teaching and learning is directly tied and connected to our strategic review. Three years ago, we started the work with our instructional framework. In the first year, we worked with our administrators to learn instructional work and give them coaching and guidance on how to provide data, targeted feedback to our teachers on their instruction and help them grow and learn in the classroom. The goal is to help. The goal is to help everyone get around the next bend. In the road in order to grow their craft. This is for teachers that are on all three areas of the spectrum, from new teachers to veteran teachers. We all have things that we can grow and learn and is to provide that support. The second year, we brought in teachers to be teacher leaders to be on our team. That we were working with the Center of Educational Leadership at the University of Washington. And we also introduced the instructional framework to our teachers in schools. The first year, we worked on two of the areas. And that was student engagement and classroom environment and the culture. So through the focus theory, that professional learning was provided to our teachers. And then the principals and administrators would go in to do observations in the classroom and provide feedback to our teachers around those areas. Those areas, classroom environment and culture and student engagement are directly tied to the strategic plan. For safe and good on inclusive, which is our classroom environment and culture, as well as appropriate and timely instruction that is connected to students. This year, we moved to year three, which is our final year working with the Center of Educational Leadership at the University of Washington. And from here forward, we will continue to go where it's on our own. With their guidance and support as we live. This year, we moved to also continue. Have our teachers involved in this work. And many of our teams grew, our H F, our teachers in our team, as well as our students. And we, the focus of this is the through line, that you see up there on the board. And this is the through line for supporting teacher learning. And then starts with leader practice, which is tied to leadership development and our strategic plan. And this is training and providing support to our administrators. On how to provide feedback and also how to provide professional learning in the classroom or schools or their staff. That directly impacts our teacher learning. And the effectiveness of our professional learning and making sure that our professional learning is tied to the work that needs to happen in the classroom. And that directly affects the teacher practice in the classroom within directly impacts our students' learning. So we are making sure that all decisions that we are making follows along this through lines and that we are providing that support and professional learning for all of our staff. And we have also started including our IA in the work around the instructional framework. We're in the beginning stages of that, but next year will be sort of came on who's giving them more.
Any questions of her? Hearing none, may I take this opportunity to express. My sincere desire for your professionalism and your attention to detail. And your tireless effort to do your job. We appreciate it. It's time for the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Chair Johnson, the board. Should be, I've got a short report for you tonight. I want to start by just thanking Fremont. It takes work to get these meetings ready and then it takes work to. Clean the mess up after we're here and so thank you to Fremont for hosting tonight and. And that goes for every, every building that hosts, it's always great to be at in schools, I know it does take extra work and so thank you very much for you and your staff for, for hosting tonight. As Director Larson mentioned tonight, this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. And I guess Fred Rogers, who said that anyone who does anything to help a child is a hero to me. I want to echo Mr. Rogers sentiment on that. You know, teaching is the one profession that creates all other professions. We absolutely love our staff, we're thankful for what they do and. And I would say that, you know, teaching's probably never been as complex. Is at least in my, my time in the classroom and being a teacher at several different levels. Being a principal at several different levels, I look at what teachers are doing now and. It's probably more complex, teachers have expectations that. Are profound and working with children and families. Expectations around instruction and. And yet our teachers still show up every day. They are there for our kids every day. And our teachers often know that what kids need isn't always in their lesson plan that day. I, it's funny to be here. Part of the staff meeting a few weeks ago here and said, I've had when my own kids are here and. I told the staff like, hey, so thankful for you, you know, you're part of our prayers at night when our kids say their prayers, right? So just want to say thank you to our staff, they are loved, we're grateful for what they do. And hopefully. Hopefully they feel that and know that as we work to celebrate them throughout the year. Always want to talk about kids as well. I will, I continue to believe there's such a false narrative about kids in the media. There is a disproportionate amount of media about. How troubled society is gonna be. I will always stand and say that I am. Absolutely optimistic about the future of our, of our schools. I'm absolutely optimistic about the future of our community and our nation. Our kids are incredible, they're amazing. And unfortunately, a lot of people don't know that, but if you have a chance to work with kids. You'll see that I think it's, it's the greatest generation of kids I've ever worked with in my life. They're intelligent, they're smart, they can problem solve. They do things and treat people like I wish I would have when I was a kid. And I just want to say, we've got so many examples of kids doing great things in our community. You hear about these when we do the, the, the student recognitions. But it doesn't, as great as those are, there could be a hundred of the recognitions every time we meet together. On the amazing things kids do. I just want to say, I, I. Again, I'm optimistic about our future as a school district and the community because we're kids. They're doing great things and they're learning and I appreciate Michelle reports tonight, Assistant Superintendent and the support. We're seeing the growth that. The board expects and that's happening because they're getting the care and support they need. To get the instruction they need to make sure that they can graduate to the plans that are successful. You talked tonight about this partnership and I don't need to spend much time on there. But we are always interested in deepening our partnerships that support the board's role and vision and also supports the community. The workforce needs students and workforce that is. Able to work in high wage, high demand jobs today. Every employer I talk to is begging for people that can get to work for them, we've heard about local investment, both reports, but it's been mentioned. But there's other employers throughout our area that are really begging for jobs in advanced manufacturing and welding and, you know, auto mechanics. And are the intent of this, and I appreciate the board's support on this. It'll be a two-year commitment in this position, but some return on investment data will be coming to the board and to both myself and Dr. Paul Grant, UCC. To really provide a pathway for. Students to get into a vertical and immediately into the workforce and work here. Raise a family here, buy a house here, become employed here, and this should strengthen all of our. Career technical work that we're doing with UCC, so I appreciate that opportunity. But lastly tonight, I just want to thank the board. I, I am grateful to have seven bosses that. Sometimes might feel like they get beat up. And, you know, this position, they're elected and, but this volunteer position, I could not ask for seven better people who care so deeply for kids. I don't often talk about the evening conversations we have at nine o'clock at night. What a question and a concern. The time you spend away from your own jobs and family to think about how to benefit the community. I just want to say thank you for your dedication. Really, I mean, we think about our staff and I think about our board, it's really being community heroes. And particularly these volunteer positions. That you dedicate your time to really an improvement for the community is so honored. And I just want to say thank you for your leadership and thank you for your direction on ensuring that we're meeting the needs of our kids. I appreciate your patience with me. And your patience as we, as we really organize to get that done. And so thank you very much, Director Johnson, that's all I have.
Any questions of the superintendent? Hearing none, on behalf of the board, I would like to personally share. With you, superintendent, a job well done. You have a lot on your plate and we appreciate the attention of being proactive. And sharing each step along the way so we can support you, thank you very much. We will now ask for the individual report of the directors, we worked out with Director Bishop.
I just want to say I appreciate the comments that were made. And I appreciate the support that people have for their colleagues. Appreciate that. That people have to be here. I appreciate the work that's being done both in the school and in the business office. There's so much that is done behind the scenes and. Honestly. I feel like people really, really, really care about students and they've done first. Even though some things are not always in the public or always. Things have to be done a little bit in a protected manner. There are reasons for those interacting, there are reasons for those policies. Where to help protect privacy and the fact that there are active beneficial.
Thank you, Director Bishop, Director Shirkcliff.
Thank you to all the teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week, that's all I've got, thanks.
Thank you very much, Director Cotton.
I too want to thank the guest that came tonight to speak, I think it's really important and we do hear you. So it'll be sixty years, the September that I started my journey with Roseburg Public Schools at. Riverside Elementary, most of you know where Element Riverside was and there's, what's left is. The fifth and sixth grade classroom building. And, and then the gym is now Roseburg Christian Fellowship. And I can go through and name every one of my elementary teachers. And most of my junior high teachers and a lot of high school teachers. But my. The teacher that saved me, I had a really rough time in fourth grade was Mrs. Dorothy Wilson. And maybe some folks in here knew her. She was so kind. And got me over the hump. And. There's a lot of Mrs. Dorothy Wilsons in this district. Every day. And. I wish I would have had the knowledge to be a teacher. I don't, I do work with kids through Young Life. And that is, that is a lot of fun. I just want to remind folks, it can't get political here, but we do have a bond. The votes next week. It would really help if that bond passed, there's so many things that need to be done, I looked at the vestibule out here, Fremont. It makes this school so much safer. And we, we, we need to get that done at all the schools and I know that's going to happen and we need to get. The locks in to our buildings and people say locks, well, these are, these are special locks where. A staff member can push one button and the doors are locked, all the doors are locked. Don't have to run and I, I was able to do the drill at the high school, the last drill they had and. I was wore out running with administrator, his building to be responsible to make sure those doors are locked and so there's, there's a lot of good things. Better air quality, we wouldn't so much have to worry about smoke days because. Our kids, you know, they may not be able to go outside and play, but. At least they could be in school and there's gyms and things, so I hope that. People get out and vote, it's your choice how you vote and I would encourage the board members. Between now and voting day, talk to ten to twenty people that you know. And just remind them, have you voted? I think it's, it's. It's critical and I appreciate everyone and I especially appreciate Jared. Twenty-nine years on the board. He makes it, he makes it enjoyable. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Cotton, Director Larson.
I'll probably just echo what Director Shirkcliff said. I come from a background in education, I've lived all over the country and been involved with districts in a lot of places and it's an honor to be here. And these are the. That's why I wasn't gonna talk. Every year. These are the people I trust my kids to every day. And I do trust them. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Larson, Doctor Kim, Kim.
I just appreciate you. All the classified employees that came, I also worked as a classified and. And I know how. How much you do and, and it's a difficult job and we definitely are, you know, we're pulling to, to keep you and we. You know, we want to be in your court and. Just, also, we're working on the curriculum for the new math. And I'm kind of excited to see there will be some, some changes with that that I think will be positive. And that's going to be open for parents to take a look at and. Be sure before we approve it and actually purchase it, so take advantage of that opportunity. To take a look at, at what we are gonna be. Maybe choosing to approve here. Just appreciate that all of the work that. The cabinet members do and, and always providing the information we ask for. Quickly and, and you, you're very responsive to the board and we appreciate that.
Thank you, Director Lee.
Well, I start to talk. I appreciate you teaching. And I, it was in a request that we. Boy making sports because it's all been.
Okay, I brought this issue.
And I have nothing that will add to benefit the students moving forward. Our next session will be a work session that'll be held on May twenty-fourth at the administrative office. And as a note of interest, please come prepared to take the annual photo of directors. Bring your best smile and your three-piece suit. There'll be no other business before the meeting, as chair, I hereby adjourn the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the board, I sincerely appreciate you taking your. Precious time to come share with us, thank you very much, have a great, safe weekend, be dry out there. Meeting adjourned.